I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Rattone City Commission to order. Glenn, can we have a roll call?
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Present.
And for the record, Mayor Sagata is absent this evening.
Very good. We all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I recognize we have a lot of nice visitors in the crowd today. Thank you all for coming. If you have not signed in, please do so, or at least hold, you know, representative of your group. And our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, March 24th, 2020, at 6:00 PM in these chambers. We have a notice of potential quorum. The quorum of the city commissioners may attend the New Mexico Municipal League District 3 meeting that will be held here in Rattone on Wednesday, March 25th, 2020, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Rattone Museum located at 108 South Second Street. We have a proclamation tonight. Commissioner Chatterley is going to be most of it, but I'm going to introduce it. Whereas American women of every race and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless ways.
And whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of our nation's life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas American women have played a unique role throughout history by providing the majority of the nation's volunteer labor force and have been particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in the country. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, not only to secure their own right of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor union movement, and the modern civil rights movement. And whereas American women in history deserve to be recognized and celebrated for their contributions to literature, teaching, and study of American history, now therefore the city of Rattone, New Mexico, here in Mexico, here, makes claims March 2020 as Women's History Month and urges all citizens in Rattone to recognize the generations of women who have helped to shape our culture, our traditions, our economy, and our history. And when it's whereof, the seal of the city of Rattone is affixed this 10th day of March 2020.
And we want to give great thanks to the PBW women who are really the ones who promote these proclamations and this work. So thank you so much. (applause) And now I'd like to recognize the Rattone Independent Writers who have come to present a special recognition. So come on up to the podium if you don't mind. Can I introduce yourselves?
Hello, my name is Tim Trahill, President of the Independent Writers. We would like to have Ron Chavez come down here, please.[278.64][278.64](laughter) You want to talk about bikers, there you go, come here.[282.02][282.02](laughter) We, the Independent Writers of Rattone, would like to thank you for your service. We love you for all you've done for us and what you've done for our service. We love you, welcome home. And with this, we have a presentation for you. First of all, 50th anniversary pin. Now let the girl who wrote this come here, Hannah. Let her read what we wrote for you.
This flag made the journey from California to the Veterans Memorial in Washington DC. It is more than just red, white, and blue fabric. It is the symbol of the veterans' blood, sweat, and tears. This flag carries with it the memories and spirits of our veterans nationwide. And the Independent Writers of Rattone present this flag to Ron Chavez for your honorable and faithful service.
You guys didn't need it, but thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice.
Got to get a picture.
(laughter)
Wow, we need to see everybody in here.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for doing that. We have been proud of this commissioner since he adopted him.[402.62][402.62](laughter) And we're proud to have him serve with us on this commission. Thank you. All right. Now, I think we have some comments from the general public. So if you've signed up to, if you're going to talk about anything that is on the agenda, we appreciate it if you wait till that agenda item. But if you have something that is not on the agenda, you may approach the podium and introduce yourself. Sure, you can start.
I have to apologize, my hearing, I lost it earlier.[442.12][442.12](laughter) Haven't found it since.
And we also appreciate it if you try to keep your comments as, you know, as brief as possible. We want to hear everything you have to say, but keep it as brief as possible.
Most people have heard about the dog incident that occurred this last week, but if you haven't, one of our citizens, Rose Thoyne, lives on the corner of Fourth and Cook. Nice house with the turrets on it, you know, that was attacked outside her home by a loose pet's...
Pit bull.
Pit bull, that's what I'm trying to say. She was airlifted to Albuquerque for the New Mexico Hospital, University of New Mexico Hospital. She's in very bad shape. I'm not going to get graphic about the extent of the injuries, but it's bad.
Very bad.
She survived the first day of surgery. Her husband is down there with her now, but it's not a good situation. I thought it was important to bring that to the citizenry and to the commission. We've, I've lived in Rattone for 15 years. I've had a few run-ins with dogs on the street. I've had a lot of people say, "The city doesn't do anything about the loose dogs." Well, we've got an incident here that should be a wake-up call. And just stop and think, what if it was a little kid walking home from school? It just boggles the mind that it happened. I'd like to address one thing, the past of what's already happened. The dog, as I understand, was put in the animal shelter. Whether it's been put down yet or not, I don't know. I have no idea if anybody's issued a citation for letting the dog run loose or if there's any penalty for this, but I think that the city commission is certainly look at that. The, there's going to be a good deal of cost to the Thoyne family. The medical bills alone are going to be horrible, but they, I believe they have some health insurance that's going to cover some of that. But in the meantime, she's going to spend weeks down at the Albuquerque Hospital. Her husband's going to have to go back and forth. They're going to have motel bills, meals, travel expenses, and a long period of recuperation and rehabilitation afterward. We're trying to raise some money for the family. My shaking, by the way, is due to Parkinson's disease, not fear.[594.12][594.12](laughter) This is a lady I just walked in, is a next-door neighbor of the Thoynes, Monica Ingamels. She and I have been trying to get a bank account started. We're having a little difficulty with that. We're working with George Thoyne to do that. Hopefully that'll get done tomorrow.
I haven't, yeah, I haven't received work. If you manage to get it done, then.
My wife, who is the brains of the outfit, by the way, I'm just a mouthpiece, got started collecting money over the weekend. She's got 1,300 some odd dollars collected, but that's a drop in the bucket. If anybody else would like to get involved in this thing, I don't mean just giving a donation, but if anybody else gets involved in the collection or generation of funds, we'd be happy to work with them.
Do you happen to know, was the dog identified?
I'm sorry?
Yes, the dog was identified.
Okay, and the owner is identified. There is an ordinance, and it's a good time for this, to put that out to the general public as well. There is an ordinance, and there are heavy fines for letting your dog run loose. So if, if that dog was identified and reported in the police report, was there a police report?
Looking forward from here on out, I think the onus is going to be on the city leadership, commission, city manager, police chief. What can we do about it? Well, everybody owns a dog in this town. He's got a responsibility for keeping it in the yard or on the leash or some way taken care of. You can't have dogs running around loose. I spotted two just on the way downtown yesterday. If you see dogs, it needs to be reported to the city. But I don't know the number. I think the city needs to publicize who to call and what be done. I know there's a dog, an animal control officer. I haven't met him. I knew, know John, who was there for many years. And I don't expect a single person to go up against a vicious dog in a situation like that, but the police department should be able to provide backup if we got a situation like that. We certainly can't say we weren't aware there's a problem. We might have said that two weeks ago, but right now, we can't say, gee, the city had no idea there was a dog problem. There's a dog problem. You may either have to write a more effective ordinance, or if the ordinance is good, we've got to do a much more effective job of enforcing it.
May I inject? May I say something?
Yes.
I'm just about to step down. I'll yield my time to Monica, as they do in the...
Can you give us a second?
My name is Monica Ingamels. And I was one of the first on site when this happened. Police responded quickly, as did medics. But what we are trying to address here is really that there are too, I am at least trying to address the fact that there are too many dogs that run loose on a regular basis. And this is not just a control issue, this is an attitude issue. We have an attitude issue in this town. People allow their dogs to run loose. I mean, if, I have four dogs, three small and one medium size. If any of them get away, I am out there trying to locate it immediately. Most people don't. They open the door and let the dog run. I see, I have walked dogs, I've had dogs for 10 years, so I've walked a lot, a lot in the, in town in this, in this time. And I call them in when I see them. I worked with John Taft. I have worked with, with a new dog catcher. He, he is very agreeable, very efficient, but I also know that he needs backup. I mean, he needs backup as to, there is some, and I don't know if this is true, so I'm just going to put it out there, that there used to be citations written, but then they were thrown out in court. That's not acceptable. Somebody needs to back up the person that writes the citations, because if there are no consequences, it doesn't matter what kind of laws we have on the books, if there are no consequences, people are not going to pay attention. So basically, this horrendous, absolutely horrendous accident, and it wasn't an attack. I wish it hadn't been necessary, but I know that now people are paying attention. So I'm asking for your backup as well, and I also know that one person is not enough. One dog catcher is not enough, plus he's not there on the weekends. I call the police when there is nobody else, and they do respond, but maybe we need a campaign of some kind to help people understand that it doesn't matter whether you have a small dog or a big dog, a nice dog or a vicious dog. No dogs should run loose because they all cause problems, also the small ones. I'm walking four on leash, and if I have other dogs dancing around, it's a problem. I've taken spills because of that. And you don't even have to be walking dogs. You can just be walking yourself. And having small dogs weaving around your feet is, it's a hazard, plus they can cause accidents, vehicle accidents. So I'd like to put the call out there for an attitude change, the owners to take more responsibility, because that's really what needs to happen. Just enforcing something is also, it's like fighting windmills. We need more responsibility.
Monica, I think there is a leash law.
There is, yes. Yeah, and that of course needs to be enforced.
No dog is walked or outside off a leash.
Right. There is a leash law, and there's a containment law. There has supposed to be containment in the yard.
Consequences for violating the leash law.
Yes, and there are. So we do have a shortage of enforcement, and we are aware of that.
So...
But this is, this is so horrendous. This is so, so horrendous.
And the, the dog catcher is under, under the direction of the police department.
Right, I know, yeah. The woman who was attacked was a friend of mine and a next-door neighbor. She was attacked right outside her back door, as soon as she got out the gate in the alley. It could have been either one of us. It could have been her, it could have been me, it could have been the lady that lives on the corner. This was not a provoked attack. And she had a dog with her. The dog was not attacked. The attacking dog went straight for the person. She is, it's, it's a miracle that she is alive, so. Yeah, so, but I really feel that, yes, enforcing the laws, of course, backing up the officers that, that write the citations, but also some kind of campaign maybe for informing people. I think people are really ignorant of what it, what it can cause when their dogs run loose. So I'd like to see some kind of hullabaloo about that. Okay? Thank you.
I would also like to note that the judicial system, whether it's, you know, local, you know, is really a separate system from, so how, you know, how that's enforced in court is not under our auspices.
Okay, so how would we address that if this is a true allegation, that they are not following through with this? How would we?
And I can't say that they are or aren't. I'm just saying that we don't have that authority.
Right.
To go to the judge and tell him to respond differently.
Okay, okay. So citizens' movement then, or what?
Well, I think it would be fair to ask.
Yeah.
Talk to the judge.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not, actually, I'm not even sure what that process is. I would guess you could write him a letter or an email, and...
We can write letters, and we can get signatures.[1162.82][1162.82](laughter)
You might just start by asking, asking him what his policy is for when incidents like this come up first, and then, because sometimes it's, you know, we have problems, and they're being addressed, but, you know, if you're in, swimming in the ocean, sometimes you just, it doesn't look like you're doing enough.
That's right. I can understand that. And it doesn't, what I was also referring to, it wasn't just this incident, but when dogs are found running loose, and especially if they're repeat offenders, if there is no consequence, then why would people pay attention? The only way usually you can make people to pay attention is if it, it hurts them somehow, and the pocketbook is the easiest place.
We recently passed a new animal ordinance in the city of Rattone, which addressed all this, and addressed the...
Good.
And, you know, I'm sure that this is a terrible thing to happen, but we're aware of the, of the problem that goes on, you know? I see it myself, too. But we did pass a new sweeping ordinance that took effect, and they've been, the animal control officer has been trying, I do know that.
I know that, I, yeah. I know him pretty well by now.[1246.04][1246.04](laughter) Also before this incident, so.
You can also get, get any of the ordinances for the city online through our city website. It'll take you to the link that has ordinances, so you can actually read specifically what those animal ordinances are.
Yes.
But I suggest, as Mayor Protim Schuster said, you know, contacting the judge so that when those citations are given, that you feel that there should be more enforcement.
There should be more, yeah, because, you know, other ones, otherwise it's like an empty threat, if there are no real consequences, if they get tossed out anyway. When did this ordinance take?
It's been about eight months, seven, eight months, maybe a year.
Did one little tweak to it not too long ago, but...
That's true.
Yeah, it was a while ago.
And we, prior to that, we didn't have an effective ordinance, and we did pass an ordinance that allows how many animals you can have, what kind of animals, dog, cruelty to animals, how many dogs, the dog is leashed or pinned, in a substantial, and it's, the ordinance is all theirs.
Right, good. I'm going to read up on it, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can also call the Humane Society, and they're the ones who presented and helped us create that ordinance, so they're, you know, they're pretty familiar with it.
Yes, Barbara Bonahom is also a friend. And my dogs are all rescued, so, yeah.[1333.82][1333.82](laughter)
Mayor Protim and Commissioner, obviously not entirely in my purview, but I did have a conversation with Chief Garcia prior to this meeting. The dog in question has been identified and is in custody. The dog's owner has also been identified. It's in the midst of a legal process that, you know, is not really mine to speak to, but he did, he did say that he'd be happy to visit with anyone that would like about those proceedings, but at least in this case, the, the animal and the owner have both been identified, and the dog is not on the street at this time.
Good, very good. Well, thank you very much for your time and attention to this matter. You know, we, we do care about these issues. Anyone else? Seeing none, hold on. All right. Under, that was in five, under eight oh six, a approval of February 25th, 2020, regular commission meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in, approved, or seconded to approve the meeting minutes. Is there any discussion or any other question? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Diliterate an act on public celebration permits of Rattone Main Street Spring Hops and Bines Event on April 18th at the Rattone Museum. I believe we have Ms. Brenda Ferry to speak on this matter.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor Protim. We have our event scheduled for April 18th at the Rattone Museum. We are doing a Taste of the Twenties this year, so please come dressed as a flapper or dude, but where's the hat? I don't know. But we're just trying to make it a little bit different, and this year we have two breweries and three wineries. And I believe Michael Ann has all of the permits, plus all of the fees that these people have to pay.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner, we do have the applications in your packet, and then we do have the $10 fee for each of those, so if they're approved this evening, we will send those to Alcoholic Beverage Control tomorrow so that they can issue these permits well in advance of the April 18th event. There's also a list of servers. The only thing I had a question on, Brenda, I think in the past, we had to provide some sort of a floor plan.
Oh.
That showed where each...
Was going to be.
Yeah.
I'll get it to you in the morning.
That was the only question I had for you.
Yes, we do have to have it. It'll get sent back.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll email it to you.
Okay, so that's good. So that would be the only thing we're lacking, is the floor plan.
Can we, can we interest you with that floor plan, then?
Oh, definitely. I'll get with Brenda in the morning, and we'll prepare the packet to send to Alcoholic Beverage Control. That is a requirement in addition to the list of servers for each brewery and winery.
Well, this is a great event. We always have fun.
Yeah, it's going to be a lot of fun, and we'll be catered this year.
Very good.
Yeah, with the twenties theme, and we usually don't go over four vendors, but we had two people working on it at the same time, and we ended up getting five people to say yes. So here we go. So we're doing five. And it exposes people to our museum as well.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second to approve the permit for the public celebration at the Rattone Hops and Bines Event, April 18th at the Rattone Museum. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you all.
All right. Diliterate an act on the MOU between the city of Rattone and Rattone Little League.
Mayor Protim and Commissioner, we have a boilerplate agreement that's fairly similar to signed in years past, and we have a couple of representatives from Rattone Little League here this evening. From a city standpoint, you know, we're in favor of Little League and already working on the field, so I would recommend going forward, but I'll let these young ladies say what they have to say.
Very good. Can you guys introduce yourselves for the record?
Whitney Fernandez, I am the president of the Little League this year. And I'm Ambrosita Centis, and I'm the vice president and the concession stand manager.
Very good. So do you have a pretty good group of kids? Are you already signing up, or?
We are. We did early registration, and right now, we're just doing regular registration until the 20th of this month.
Very good. Well, it does look like a good, cool moment.
That's pretty standard.
Yes, we've done this every year.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between the city of Rattone and Rattone Little League.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the MOU between the city of Rattone and Rattone Little League. Additional comments?
No.
Very good. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, ladies, for your work. This is really important for our community, and we appreciate your work.
You're welcome.
One thing I'd like to point out, Mayor Protim and Commissioner, is that it appears that Rattone Little League has been selected as a host city for state softball for...
Yes, in July...
July for 11 and 12.
It's an 11 and 12-year-old state softball tournament. It's July 10th through the 17th, so that will definitely be going on here that weekend, that week.
Normally a pretty large event, little tough on a local board to manage all of the different responsibilities that are necessary to make it happen. I've spoken to some members about the possibility of them maybe approaching Rogers Tax about assistance. It generates a large amount of traffic, but because of the number of games, the umpires, the field maintenance crew, it's, it's kind of above the scope of, of what Little League would technically do, but it's something that I think my department will try to help out in any way we can. We're going to have some shortcomings probably in the concession and restroom area that may require additional porta-potties to accommodate these sizes, but as we get closer to that event, I would look forward to having more dialogue, because there is going to be some needs there in order to make pull that off.
Definitely.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. So obviously... So obviously, these ladies will need some extra volunteers if anybody's interested.
That is always welcome, I'm sure.
All right, item D, deliberate an act on a bid award for the Schuler Office Renovation Project. Mr. Phillips.
Mayor Protem and Commission, in your packet you should have a recommendation for award from Ms. Antonucci, and it details the three bids. As you can see, the low bid and the number two bidder are separated by just a fraction of a couple hundred dollars, which on a $50,000 project is pretty rare. Gives you a pretty good sense that the amount that you're paying is indeed what the work is valued at. I would recommend we award this project archillata construction for the $49,792, and proceed with this project. And we'd be glad to answer any questions if anyone has it.
Where, where's archillata construction out of?
Archillata construction is based out of Maxwell.
Oh, very good.
Make a motion to approve the $49,792 bid to archillata construction.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bid for, to archillata construction for the Schuler Office Renovation Project.
Mayor Protem, just for clarification, it will be $49,792 plus the grocery receipts tax.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Do we need a roll call vote, or? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
No opposed, so the motion passes. Thank you. Deliberate an act on Resolution 2020-14, Authorization to Create a New Bank Account and Fund a Number for CDBG Downtown Infrastructure Project. I assume, Mr. Phillips, you have the information.
Mayor Protem and Commission, in the efforts to build an eight-inch-thick binder for a CDBG project, there are numerous steps that takes to get there. The next one in this process is creating this bank account to begin the accounting process with CDBG. They require an independent, non-interest-bearing account be created specifically for CDBG grant funds. And Ms. Antonucci's informed me that the only way we can actually do that is by you passing a resolution that gives her the authority to open said checking account. So the next step in what's going to be a lengthy process is approving item E on the agenda this evening.
Very good. This is a good project, and we're very proud of your hard work on this.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-14.
It has been moved and seconded that Resolution 2020-14 authorizing our city treasurer to create a new bank account and fund number for CDBG Downtown Infrastructure Project. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Or is this needed a roll call?
No.
There were no opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much for that hard work.
Thank you.
Deliberate an act on Resolution 2020-15, Budget Adjustment Number Nine, FY20.
Mayor Protem and Commission, I did put this in your box, so hopefully each of you picked it up before the meeting. Did you get yours, Lori?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody has a copy. So we do have this evening budget adjustment number nine. Mainly just line item adjustments. We are getting into probably the last quarter of the fiscal year after the end of March. So if we take a look at this, we did receive a donation from the Friends of the Library to pay for the purchase of a TV stand and video games for the library. So in order to offset that donation, those expenses, I've recorded the donation and then showing it in the library fund under the line items for those particular expenses. Other than that, like I said, you will see some line item adjustments in the executive. Our building maintenance, at the last meeting, we perch, approved the purchase of the new AED machines that will go in City Hall and also the senior center. So I'm just kind of moving some monies around in those line items for those additional expenses that we hadn't budgeted for earlier in the year. And we had some savings in some of our insurance line items after we paid our second half of the insurance. And then in the fire department, due to staff turnover and some vacancies, they're running a little high on overtime. So we do have some savings that we're seeing in the PERA and the group insurance line item. So I'd like to reclass some of that savings into the overtime to cover those expenses. I'm not sure that that's gonna be enough to get us through the end of the fiscal year. But we'll kind of reassess that here in another month or so and see where we're at. Also, the animal control vehicle, it is a 2010 Ford F-150, and so we did have some recent repairs, and so we need to increase that line item as well. So, but you'll see the net increase to the general fund is, is zero because I'm just reallocating the monies amongst the various line items. Then in our fire fund, we did receive a state grant, and it was in the amount of $88,164, and that's for fire hose replacement. So that's something that the fire department will be moving forward with that purchase here in the near future before the end of the fiscal year. And then also I'm just making some line item adjustments that are necessary for, let's see, the various capital outlay line items that we have for the training center, the fire station renovation project of Station One, which is complete, and taking some funds from the Troy Station project, which the only thing we have left there is probably, I think, asphalt or concrete. But I don't foresee that we'll get that done probably in this fiscal year. And then under economic development, we do have the new quarter cent tax that recently went into effect. But when I did the budget several months ago, I didn't have a line item for the grocery receipts. It's an administration fee that we pay, or that they deduct from our GRT distribution. So I'm creating a new line item for that. And then also, our new economic developer has requested, we do have some tech memberships that we would need for her marketing efforts. And so I'd like to move some monies out of the group insurance line item that aren't needed into that line item for her. And then just lastly, adjustment to the uniform line item in the sanitation department, so. Is there any questions on the adjustments we're requesting this evening?
I'll make a motion to approve a Resolution 2020-15, Budget Adjustment, Adjustment Number Nine, FY20.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded to approve Budget Adjustment Number Nine, FY20. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Mr. Phillips, I understand that you're filling in for our city manager, so.
I am, indeed. Thank you. Mayor and Commission, as you are probably aware, Mr. Berry is not here this evening as Mr. Campbell, Mr. Sykes, and Mr. Berry are attending the Quality Quality Control Commission to support the city's efforts toward a temporary standard on their MPDS permit. And that meeting began at nine o'clock this morning and was still going before I was invited to substitute this evening. Thank you for having me. I promised Mr. Berry I would keep it relatively short and informative. Larry Marks and I attended February's meeting of the Northeastern Regional Transportation Planning Organization in Clayton. We were informed that the highly anticipated call for projects on transport project, transportation projects would not be happening this year. The reason given was that the legislature made direct appropriations for transportation projects via Senate Bill 232, and the City of Raton did not receive any funding in the final version of Senate Bill 232. Along those same lines, if you were watching the news much this morning, I'm sure you're aware that due to the downturn in price of oil, the governors currently began line item vetoing items out of the state budget. It was at $50 million, I believe, and counting when I saw it at 5:00 a.m. I would anticipate that will grow, and I would anticipate that she may also take the pen to sections of the capital outlay funding. At this point, we have about $225,000 in police vehicles and $700,000 in economic development building that may be at stake if those vetoes were to affect us. We'll be monitoring that. But it looks like a pretty serious setback to state budget with the oil crisis happening. Shilt Survey provided a subcontractor to provide an aerial survey of several downtown streets and avenues on Monday. The drone flew the project area of the CDBG project, as well as Raton Water Works water line replacement project. The data will be used to design both projects. The drone technology for LiDAR imaging and survey data was impressive. Flew the city at about 400 feet, and it cost a fraction of whatever aerial surveying used to cost. Once upon a time, it would be panel points in an airplane. This was an autonomous drone that lifted off a multimodal, flew the grid, landed, probably took all of 45 minutes and provides some 6,000 data points of topographical data. Everything from curb gutter lines where water meters and water valves are located. So it should assist us in that project. As evidenced by the banking resolution on tonight's agenda, work on the CDBG project is ongoing. Scott Wright, Community Development Bureau Chief, as well as Steve Lacy and our project manager Donna Stewart of DFA, will be in town on Friday morning to meet with Michael Ann and I. It's nice to see them out in the communities performing outreach activities and getting to know our town as part of this process, something that I haven't seen from the CDBG bureau in my years past. On a final note, sharing the somber news, if you haven't already heard, of the passing of Mr. William Foltenetti. Mr. Foltenetti was longtime executive director of the New Mexico Municipal League and a champion in Santa Fe for all municipalities. His passion, experience, and dedication to municipalities were greatly missed. It's my understanding that Mr. Berry and Mr. Campbell plan to represent the City of Raton at his services on the Roundhouse on Friday. And I believe Mayor Segoda may also be in attendance as president-elect of Municipal League. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you very much.
I do not have that.
Very good. Anyone have anything else to say? In that case, thank you all for coming this evening, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you.
Making a copy of your report.